Matilda. All four in, and I would say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose the lot sign, there is none. Here. Okay. Item number three. Consideration of final site plan for property located on 415 East Main Street. Dixon Site Plan.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what we have here in front of us is a site plan submitted by Frank Dixon for property located at 415 East University Street. This is one that was submitted a couple of months ago. It was kind of substandard, and so we asked Mr. Dixon to add the required elements that are required by our zoning ordinance for a site plan. What he's doing is establishing a commercial building, I believe it's going to be a professional office space. Christian, tell me when I'm wrong. I'm going to rent those out. Two units, under one roof, essentially. Thirteen required parking spots, thirteen is what he has. Water and sewer and electric all shown on the site plan. And like I said, it's on the corner there of East University Street and Rock Street. Just up the road there. So, Christian, anything that you would like to add?
The parking spots, he has, he has board that are required. And also, one side is going to be a beauty shop, and the other side is going to be for anybody who wants to, you know, do a professional business service. But he has, they were taken with us.
And that is on C1, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, and Christian, would you recommend approval?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you, question?
Any questions from his panel? If not, I need a motion to the site plan be approved.
I see that.
Motion, Matilda, in the second, please. JJ. All four of you, if you don't say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose the lot sign, there is none. Thank you all. Okay, we're moving on to item number four. Item number four, consideration preliminary subdivision plan for property located on High Tech Drive, Water Street. Assured Development and Investment Corporation Division.
David has this one. You know, let him pass it out. First thing, Ken, you need to shorten up the name of that company. It's way too long for me to be typing that out off the top of my head. Thank you, David. Okay, Mr. Chairman, what we have is the Assured Development Management Corporation preliminary plan submitted in 4.06 acres and the seven proposed new lots for property located on High Tech Drive and Water Street. The proposed new lots would vary in size from .25 acres to 1.06 acres, and all of the proposed new lots are currently vacant with the exception of Lot 1, which has an existing structure. Lot 1?
Three.
Is that Lot 3?
Yes.
Okay, so that's Lot 3 that has an existing structure. Thank you, David. Would require front setback variance from the Board of Zoning Appeals, but we don't need that tonight for preliminary approval. We only need it before the final approval. The proposed new lots are served by an existing 10-inch water line and existing 8-inch sewer line, a proposed water line, a proposed sewer line, an existing hydrant, a proposed hydrant, and a proposed extension of East 7th Street. The proposed new lots are zoned R1, low density residential, and will comply with all other subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance requirements. So, we have seven proposed new lots for four acres. Two of them will be having access from Water Street. The remaining five lots will have access from a proposed extension of East 7th Street. So, we are proposing a new road construction along with new water line and new sewer lines to go down the proposed extension of East 7th Street. We have an existing fire hydrant on the corner of Water Street and High Tech Drive for air. And then we're also, you know, and then we're going to add another hydrant at the end of East 7th Street. I've spoken with Public Works Director Wayne Peake. I've spoken with Fire Department. I've spoken with Jerry Del Kennedy regarding water and sewer, and they don't see any issues with the existing infrastructure, and they don't have any issue with the, with the proposed extensions. Now, Wayne Peake did say that there might be a little issue regarding drainage on Lot 2, and so he's going to be involved with the process of the creation of the proposed street extension and the drainage from its subsequent building there. So, Wayne Peake is going to be involved with regards to drainage of this. David, any other lots that you can, that you can think of on this that, that might have drainage issue other than 2?
It doesn't move on.
I didn't see any either, but... And tonight, we are just looking for preliminary approval. Mr. Mayberry is here tonight representing the plan. He's, he's told me he's gonna, I think he's gonna put all the improvements in and then come back for finals. Is that correct, Ken?
Correct.
Yeah, so no letter of credit. To, at this point, we're not going to do a letter of credit or a lot or anything like that. We're going to make sure that everything's installed to the satisfaction of the town of Livingston, and then move on from there. So, that's, that's it from me, Mr. Chairman. I'll certainly take questions. David is here, and also Ken Mayberry, too. Any questions? We'll take them at this time.
Any questions on the panel on this site plan? Is the little house, is this the one right on the corner out here? Is that Cody?
That little man, the old business district market, I believe, is what we used to call it, if I'm not mistaken. Which little house come up there from which lot?
Assured 1.
Yeah, is that the little house that, that been, that been kind of taken out inside the block?
Uh, no, the, the little house on Lot 1 is there. The old building's on that Lot 3, and that's Old Business Street Market, I believe, is what we used to call it, if I'm not mistaken.
Three, two. Chris, can you be looking at all this?
Yes.
Can you give us some of that, help with all this? Input or whatever?
Yes, I have looked at it. The order he's had, I'm worried that the floor is in our apartment.
He said it makes a lot of noise.
Thank you, Christian.
Yes, sir.
What type of variance are they looking for on Lot 1? Or is that pertaining to Lot 3? The front, the front setback, uh, front setback variance and side setback variance. And how much of the variance are we looking? How much? Well, I mean, it's going to be 30 feet, uh, so it's, they're going to be looking at about probably 25 feet.
Looks like the one on the front, Tommy, is, is going to be very close. It goes up High Tech. It, it shouldn't be much on High Tech.
So, that's the, that's the, that's where it's going to front, that's where the ingress, egress is going to be, is on High Tech? So, you won't need a front of that, then you'll need a, you'll need a approximately 15-foot side setback variance there.
Yeah, the questions on the, JJ, if you get the answer, you hear nothing else. More questions? If not, I need a motion to the site plan be approved. So, move. Move by Robert, in the second, please, someone? JJ. That's, uh, we got our way. Who's welcome to the session, Chris Campbell. How far is that plan be approved? I don't know if we say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose the lot sign, there is none. You'll bear with me just a minute, David. Tommy, lay back a little here. Item number five, consideration of request for visiting on the property located on East Main Street of C3, gentlemen, at the vertical to R2, High Dynasty Residential Park, request.
Yes, uh, this was tabled from last month. It's the William Clark rezoning request. Mr. Campbell is here to represent Mr. Clark in this matter. There were, and the purpose for the rezoning is to rezone the property from R, or C3 to R2 to establish multifamily housing levels. We had asked Mr. Campbell to submit a site plan for this development so we could have some more information before we make our recommendation to, to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to rezone from C3 to R2.
So, what I'll do is I'll start, we had lots of questions last time. I'm going to just answer those questions real quick and everything that I've done to answer those. That's that front page there. Some of the questions, concerns we got was for the state road, the drive line for that. I spoke with Billy Joe Gore with T-Dot, and he said that with the smaller units up there, we'd have to come off Hillcrest, which then pushes me back to Wayne Peake. Spoke with him. We do have access to Hillcrest or that easement there that would actually be a continuation of Wayne Street for that side. I also, as you can see now on the drawing, it's both lots together, one with the town homes that we plan on selling, the other with the town homes we plan on renting. So, the, I also spoke with Garrus Bug, T-Dot, he's an engineer. We need a commercial entryway for the town homes closer to the, to Wayne's up there on first lot there that you saw last time, and that's just several permits and things like that, so no issues there. Water utilities, fire management, got Jerry Kennedy out there ramped out. There's water lines in the area that we can hook up to that would not be an issue for any R2 rezoning. It's enough water to supply the R2 zone along with the fire safety, hydra, some things of that nature. Jerry Kennedy also there with the sewer. The sewer line that went right in the middle of that property there, so we're good to go there when it comes to R2. Plenty of sewers there. Utilities, spoke with Upper Cumberland. There's plenty of lines to feed every town home that we need for that area that we're going to have to go in. Stormwater drainage, you know, this is a big deal here in Livingston. I went as far as I could. I spoke with T-Deck, Tara Woganluth. She's the one that told me we're going to get a construction permit along with a stormwater prevention plan, which actually will be done by civil engineer, and I've been in contact with Mike Callahan about the project. We've kind of spoke about it. Once this is rezoned, we can go ahead and move forward with a more formal site plan that would include all these things. As you can see on the map there, there's about one and a half acres that will be left empty. That could be used for drainage, detention, retention pond, whatever we need to do to ensure that these are up to par for, for every, every department. One concern we have with Mr. and Mrs. Reagan there at 201 Wayne Avenue, they're worried about property values. I've been in contact with them a couple of times. I've given, I've given them a previous plan of this, and they take a look at it, and we discussed it a little bit. Our goal is to, with this whole project, is to increase property values for newer, newer quality town homes to have a desirable curb appeal. As of right now, there's no HOAs that we need to follow there on Hillcrest Drive, so we are going to go ahead and do a higher quality town home in that area so we can go ahead and push that subdivision up and keep those prices, property values up. For me, I just see the benefits of these houses for the community. There's a, there's a large need for housing and rentals here in Livingston. This project will be able to handle, will be able to kind of feed both of those needs. You know, moving, moving families in, moving younger couples back, back home. This town home would be a great addition that they could purchase and kind of start their life here in Livingston along with the rentals there. You know, bring industries into Oregon County, bring them into Livingston. We just don't have enough rentals anywhere, and I think this will really help out. And the thing is, if we do keep it zone C3, that just opens it up to more storage units in, in the city limits. So, if this doesn't go through with the R2 or with the R2 rezoning to kind of allow this, I think that's probably what's going to end up going in their storage, and I don't think anyone wants to see that.
Hey, Cody, you had mentioned ingress, egress for the northern lots off South Hippey Drive. Did you get T-Dot approval for your driveway there for the units on the southern part of the lot?
With that, there was no issues there. Billy Joe Gore didn't seem, because it's a 30 or 35 miles an hour, there's enough sight lines from that drive line. We spoke about a turn lane. He doesn't think there would be, but there would have to be a couple of things. This was sent to Chattanooga or Frostville, and then higher up to Chattanooga, and I've been in discussion with them. He took a look at it, and he says, really, it's just a permit to make sure that with the civil engineering, we've got enough drive line into the property to, to feed from, from Main Street.
So, he didn't see, he didn't see any issue with that?
No, I didn't get any issues anywhere. The biggest issue was with the potential 6-inch water line for the appropriate fire hydrants. The only issue is we may have to actually bore underneath the state road, which comes on, on there. That was just really the only other issue.
And I see on parcel 25, you do have some area dedicated to stormwater retention or detention there. Is it, so 1.5 of that acres right now you're going to reserve for your detention?
That square area right there is approximately 1.5. Again, nothing is drawn to scale. This is just what it's been. Once we get a civil engineer in there, we'll definitely know how many units we can actually put on there. But yes, there's going to be approximately that space. Civil engineer looked at it, and also another developer that is pretty well versed in stormwater drainage took a look at it, and he didn't see any issues there because there was such a large area of space.
Yeah, that, that's probably in that low area right there.
Yes, yes, it is.
That would make, that would make a lot of sense there.
Because one thing that we could do is we could even dig a ditch deeper to allow for more, because Mike Callahan, the civil engineer, said that we need to basically, anything if we make it impervious, that's the only thing that we have to be able to accept as well, and he didn't see any issue with that.
And Mr. and Mrs. Reagan, are, are they in good shape? I noticed...
Yeah, Mrs. Reagan had a couple of questions about the actual drive lines. Of course, with that easement there, which would be a continuation of Wayne Street, the city does own that, so it would be an easement for, if you can see there, 24, that lot there, it's 24.0, is the room. Lauren Lee by Reagan, uh, Reagan Crowder, they own that there. Their tenants would have an easement. I would have an easement, and the city would have an easement to get down to that pump station that, that you guys get down there. So, it would be a shared easement. In the first page, if you look at the, or the second page of your packet, that's about, that's what the town homes up on Hillcrest would look like. That's the kind of curb that we're looking at. We probably actually put some type of stone up there and, and keep it in line with the second page for the town homes that would be there on the south side. Still work there around the garage, we probably will some type of stone work up there to keep that curb appeal as high as we can.
You refer to this as town homes as basically what you're building in an apartment apartment, that operation?
No, ma'am. Generally, apartment, town homes are generally houses that do touch each other, but they are, you enter in the front door, and then you've got an upstairs and a downstairs. Apartment complex usually has a breezeway or hallway that isn't accessed by multiple doors. Town homes are, it's considered multifamily. It's not an apartment complex. It would actually be a town home complex.
And it is a rental lot?
Uh, some of them would be, yes. But they could be sold individually.
Going, going back to what you said like you last month, Cody, if I'm not mistaken, I think that you said the, the homes, that were your intention were the homes that were going to be accessed off East Main and the southern portion, those are going to be for sale?
Yes, sir.
And then the rental ones are going to be the ones closer to Hillcrest? Is that still the plan right now?
As of right now, yes.
No, those are going to be rental.
The second page would be the ones, the ones with the garage, those would be the ones that we would look and sell.
They're not going to have, they're not going to have access there. It's going to be Hillcrest for this, this down here. That's too close to the intersection there. Right, Cody?
Yes, that's correct. Also, it's on downhill, so it's not really safe to pull out.
Cody, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, you're already seeing stormwater flow from the highway in that area where you're looking at, detention basin?
Yes, sir. I'm pretty sure that the corner of that actually crosses underneath that state, state road there from the field above, I think. What's the question?
Cody, the 1.5 acres there for the stormwater drainage and detention, the back of that lot, is there a drainage system in there now?
No, there, there's nothing there. It's just, it's kind of just a ditch. It's just a low spot there. The sewer runs along there. There's a manhole that's up closer toward, toward Hillcrest. The sewer runs kind of in that area as well. No, there's, there's not, the pumping station, we're talking about, kind of referring to the pumping station, that's, I think, further down, kind of near the 16th. I think that's where it's accessed, that road access down there. There's no, there's no drainage system down there.
No drainage, oh, there's none.
It's just, it's just the ground.
It's a natural, it's a, it's a, it's a...
And that makes sense, building, building the homes on the high side and getting the drainage down where it truly is.
Down here? Yeah, it's all drainage down this way.
You said there is a pipe under the road there?
Uh, I'm not 100% sure. I, I, I think there is, so, but I'm not 100% sure of that.
Yeah, there, there is a pipe.
And it falls towards the pumping station?
Yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Reagan, if you got any questions for the board, if you didn't place your question here, please.
Like Cody said, I've talked two or three times, and the last thing we're going to do there is more storage buildings, so we're going to have to build something there where the leakage grid space. These were, I prefer a single story, just for possible gives of view, but to build townhouses, I think the work that Cody's done around town, looks like he's done some good work around town, so if, you know, other than having storage builds, I'd rather have these there than having storage builds there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
So, Cody is seeking, and Cody, correct me if I'm wrong, this parcel is currently split zone right now?
Yes.
It's, it's C, C3 in the front and R1 in the rear?
Because of the touch of Main Street, it's got about 75 feet or whatever it was for C3 in case any commercials, but everything else is R1.
And you are seeking to zone the entire parcel 25 and parcel 33 to C3, or, or R2, excuse me?
Yes, that eliminates any other commercial coming in and basically puts me on a one-way track to do this.
Yeah, so he's seeking a positive recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to rezon parcel 25 and parcel 33 from C3 slash R1 to R2. And so, we, we've kind of talked about the steps going forward after this, Cody. Now, if it, if it makes it past tonight, then there will be a first reading at the city council level, public hearing, second reading, and then if that is approved, then you'll need some variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, this is, we've still got several steps to go, so just want to make sure that you are aware of the process.
Yeah, with, with what it's going to take to get this in line with all regulations, we're looking at it next year, start after the rainy season.
And then, a site plan?
Yes, a site plan.
A formal site plan.
Once we get further into the, hey, everything's good, good to go, we'll start to have civil engineer come in, get a full bite of the site plan. If it passes tonight, next thing we'll probably get the surveyor on board with that, get a total for that, since civil engineer knows what he needs to do, move forward with this.
Sure, and essentially, Cody is just making sure that, that, you know, things are moving in the positive direction before he goes and spends a lot of money on a, on site plan and, and survey, things like that.
Yes.
Any questions from the panel? Yeah, yeah. Okay, we need a motion to the site plan be approved?
Rezone.
Yeah, rezone.
That's not, that's not a move right now. Also, basically, would you stake a motion to either approve or deny?
I'd make a motion we approve, it wastes change of time.
Question for the region, be approved?
I say.
Second by Robert. I think I'm going to have Phyllis and Collins roll in on this, that's okay. Phyllis, do you prepare to kind of roll for this?
Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Yeller? Yes. Judge Allen?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Yeller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, concerning short-term rentals in residential district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have our city attorney, John Meadows, here tonight. He's been doing some research on the, on the issue, and John, if you would, just come up and tell us what you found, please. He wouldn't expect this, I'm kind of blindside.
Hey, just briefly, I, I was looking into regulations concerning short-term rental properties, air D and Bs in residential. rental properties, Airbnb's in residential zone areas. Uh, I, I think the city has the authority to, to regulate that to some extent. Uh, I would not recommend that the city take any action, which we try to forbid or prohibit any Airbnb or short-term rental properties in residential zone areas. Uh, I have recently come across, uh, an opinion from a, uh, chancellor, uh, Robert Babesit, his special judge for the Chance Report, Southern County, kind of declared a similar ordinance, ordinance in Hendersonville to be unconstitutional, that that could be deemed unlawful taking a person's property. So I would suggest that, that, that not be considered if it is being considered. However, as far as being able to regulate it, I, I don't see no issues with that.
So John, basically, uh, we wouldn't be able to prohibit them in a residential district, but we could make some conditions, uh, to, you know, make sure we're getting the right type of Airbnb, or a short, short-term rental.
That's correct.
So what I would suggest to us is that, uh, we kind of table this for now. Uh, if we want to come back and think about some conditions that we can put on our short-term rentals in our R one and R two, then we, then we do that. Uh, but as of right now, I don't think we need to take any action. Do you agree, John?
That's correct.
Can I, can I share something about this or does this need to be, this need to wait? Go ahead, go back to the podium, Cody, before we have, uh, so that...
I, I just want, I just want to speak on behalf of the short-term rental because I'm, I'm one of the, I'm one of the people that has a short-term rental in, in, in our residential area. Um, I've been doing it for about a year and we've seen just a large influx of visitors that come into the town, spend time here, spend money here. Uh, and I'm, I'm just going to read some things that I pulled from our views and from, from our website by doing these short-term rentals. Uh, we've had several people come in for fishing tournaments, for weddings, visiting friends, um, just passing through, come to see Burgess Falls, vacation from Lansing, vacation from Nashville, from Frostville, people coming in that have seen Livingston on the map simply because Airbnb has a large platform. Um, some of the, some of the reviews we got was it's close to a lot of fun stuff to do, it's close to downtown, uh, fun time with family and friends, just a few blocks to everything, uh, convenient location, beautiful scenic routes. Steel coop was great with the live music, the local grocery store where we grasp the basics. Uh, Town Square, uh, was awesome. It's a cute Main Street, little boutiques, very closed, local restaurants. A at the Country Diner, had Mickey Mouse pancakes. Went to Pickers Piles one, or Pickers Piles two. This is a hidden jewel. Uh, eighteen oh six General School was awesome. People from Tennessee or, including Cookville, Nashville, Spring Hill, Lebanon, Onida, Buddy Pond, Linden, even someone from Livingston.
Oh.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm off the table, I'm on table.
Okay. I just, I just wanted you to share, I just want to share what, how, how positive this is. I don't know what needs to be discussed, but...
The issue is more in, I have the issue of more about the regulation, because that's very easy. That, am I correct?
Well, in, in any conditional regulations that would be adopted would be for any new, it's not going to be for any existing. Uh, and I don't think anybody's looking to hamper any type of, uh, short-term rental. It's just making sure that it's done the right way and, uh, so no action I think needs to be taken at this time. I think we just need to do some more research on it. Because it can't, there are such things by short-term rentals and we, we want to eliminate those things. But we want to certainly promote the good ones. Or I, or that's my opinion.
Okay, as for this, I'm going to talk with this tonight, this time of year, but collect it later. Thank you. Okay, other business, Christian, you have something for us?
Yeah, Mr. Turner, uh, has, uh, the, the other block, I mean, he is putting together, put a house on. Are you up, can you up for your presentation?
Some of it. Some of it, we hear some of it.
Sit down.
Just hold it still.
Should I try to call later or something?
No, you only try to take it, Christian.
Yeah, what is...
All right, so, Mr. Turner, he has a, a piece of property that he's looking to sell to buy. He did not have the plat ready for tonight's meeting. And what he was asking, it's going to be done in the next, in the next little while, next few days.
Nothing to have, uh, give me the plat?
The plat, yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Yeah, so it, it basically what Mr. Turner is looking for is to see if I can review the plat between now and the next meeting and if it meets all of our requirements. Grant him administrative approval. We've done this in the past. Uh, it's, it's, it's not something that we do all the time, but, uh, under circumstances we can, we can certainly do that. And so, uh, um, I think that's what Mr. Turner's looking for.
If it meets our current requirements?
Sure, if it's fine. Okay, well, if that, if that be the case, then I would like, if you don't mind, Mr. Turner, my motion on that, by, you know, in that manner, to allow me to approve administrative approval. Mr. Turner's plat, it meets all our requirements.
I make that motion. It's only allowed to approve.
Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, Phil.
She made the motion to allow me to administrative approve the plat, it meets all of our requirements for our second...
Our second, too.
She, like, we need to...
All four, you know, we said aye?
Aye.
Are those proposed lots, uh, there is aye? Thank you.
Mr. Turner, if you would, please, uh, I believe our city, are you, are you going to talk to him for the second, John, or have you already?
I have.
Yes, it's Mr. Turner.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that's, uh, unless there's any other basis.
Somebody's doing questions that I have. It's, there's, uh, so I've been getting some questions about, uh, indoor, indoor, uh, climate-controlled stores. There's nothing that falls in, in our books that I see, uh, exactly. So you'd like to see wood and has outdoor storage with screen? Other, other uses like wood, like, uh, it's dry, something? Continue their uses, but nothing on that indoor climate-controlled stores.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, we talk about storage in the C two unit as a use prohibited, Christian. Uh, and... Uh, that's, that's not a lot.
C one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, I don't see it referenced, so I mean, of course, that goes back to that, uh, you know, any use that is not specifically permitted is prohibited.
Right, so, uh...
I mean, meaning...
So, see, the, I had several questions. The, the, I like, trying to address some someone. It's all outdoor stores is what I'm saying.
Storage along with the short-term?
No, no, this is, this is totally different. Yeah, I mean, I... Well, I mean, he's had some, some folks wanting, he's had some folks wanting to establish mini-stores in C one and we just don't, we don't address it. And so it goes back to that. It's prohibited.
Yeah, it's prohibited.
It's prohibited, yeah.
Right.
That's kind of consensus of the board, Christian. I mean, if you...
So it wasn't followed by any type of business, I mean, uh, any, any repair or, uh, any, uh...
Not, 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 uh, any...
Any kind of business whatsoever, not any, any cover?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, C one's kind of the lo- the local commercial anyway, Christian. I don't think that fits the definition of that district. Now, I think it does fit C three and it fits the industrial, you know, uh, industrial zone, but I don't think it fits C one and C two. Just my opinion on that, though.
Okay. Okay, I'll, 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 I'll...
All right, hi, Christian. Any other business to be involved?
Yes, sir.
Y'all, y'all have something to go over? Okay. If not, I'm, I'm in motion, we adjourn. Okay, Jay?
Yes, I'll second.
Bring it back. All four, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.